To address our group.
Yes, good, uh, thank you very much. Good morning, directors, Mr. President and staff. Jim Fissler, Mesa Water District, where I served on the board for 10 years, including two years as president. I'm here about LAFCO, but first, congratulations, Mr. President, for your 30 years on Orange County Sanitation District. That's quite an achievement.
Don't remind me 30 years.
Yeah.
Quite an huge role.
So, um, I'm standing before you in serving, in my, beginning my ninth year at OC LAFCO, serving the Orange County Special Districts as the alternate commissioner, and the voting member's seat has recently been vacated, so I'm wanting to ascend to the voting member's seat. Um, as an alternate, I sit at the dais and I participate in every agenda item and every discussion. I've only missed one meeting, so I think I've, uh, I know the LAFCO process pretty well. In fact, I'm the longest-tenured special district person up there now, and probably the third-longest tenured on the whole commission. So, I've shown the commitment by always attending. I actually sat in the audience for a year before I ever ran, and, uh, obviously, I think I have the knowledge and experience. Now, I have 21 years of, um, service to the public. Only nine, uh, in special districts. Uh, Mesa Water, as you know, the Aqua Local Government Committee, and, um, ISDOC. I just, I'm your immediate past president of ISDOC. At LAFCO and at ISDOC, I've been ver- uh, a watchdog financially. At ISDOC, I reduced your dues back down to the original 50 from 200 as soon as I took over by renegotiating contract. At LAFCO, I voted against the increased budget two months ago, and I, last week, I voted against the increase in salaries to the staff because I thought they were excessive. My other 11 years in public service was the City of Costa Mesa, and I started with Director Arlene Schaefer on the Three R Committee, Residential Redevelopment Rehabilitation Committee, I think it was called. You were the chair, and I was, got on as an alternate, and I served there about 10 years. But I also have been a Parks Commissioner. I've been a Planning Commissioner. I've been Chair of the Finance Committee. When the Finance and Pension Committees were merged, I was President again of both those, voted by the members. Um, I've served on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce, I still do. I served on the Board of the Senior Center, the Board of the Friends of the Costa Mesa Libraries. Um, I also currently serve on another Orange County Commission called, um, the Housing and Community Development Commission. We're an advisory committee to the Board of Supervisors when they wear the hat of Housing Authority, and I work, uh, at the end of the continuum of care for homeless to try to find permanent shelter, um, for disabled, veterans, families at risk, people living in cars. I've been appointed two times unanimously by the Board of Supervisors. All five voted for me twice. I also have the endorsement of your local supervisor here, Michelle Steele, as well as the endorsement of Doug Dabbert from East Orange County Water District, who's the Vice Chair of LAFCO. At, at LAFCO, I've been an effective voice, leading discussions that have benefited special districts and local control. Three points. One, if you look at the 2018 Work Plan Strategic Planning Meeting, uh, staff was saying, "We need to start listening to Little Hoover Commission," and the grand jury, "and do some consolidations." You can look in the minutes. I said, "Absolutely not. We need to only be facilitators if two willing districts come together." That has come to fruition as a new policy there. I have changed MSR process from being a very subjective process that could put negative comments, at least to one district, I got removed, and future districts it will be stopped, that is just a value judgment by an outside consultant that could live on into, in perpetuity. I want to say this very clearly. I have never been a part of a hostile takeover. I have never been part of any unilateral consolidation attempt. Uh, anything between our districts, the truth of the matter is, we have a lot of letters back and forth that are on the websites. It was communication between two districts. No one went to LAFCO. The two boards could not agree to go to LAFCO. The matter was dropped two and a half years ago. I've never brought it up. I never would be part of that. This was just, are there savings for residents, and is there a will at the boards? That was it. Also, I expect the campaign to be a positive dialogue. Did we hand out my letter? You'll see a more detailed letter that I've just sent out in response, but there was a letter sent out to the special districts. I don't know how many. I know about five so far. It's usually the general manager, saying, uh, that I stated, "LAFCO will be identifying the special districts that will provide the area's water and wastewater services." This person said, "This is not a LAFCO function." It absolutely is a LAFCO function, and I have it memorialized at last week's LAFCO meeting by asking questions of the EO and getting in there. They concluded, there's more detail in the letter, but the conclusion was simply put, "He," me, "has misrepresented the purpose and jurisdictional authority vested in LAFCO." Absolutely false. I've truly stated positively the authority of LAFCO. The person is either confused or trying to confuse you. So, I've never seen this level of interest by special interests in this election. It's, it's, it's just amazing. I know, I can connect the dots. I know why, but anyway, um, it's not necessarily in the best interest of the public, these interests of the special interests, and we're here to serve the people. Um, I'm grateful to have served and represented you. I would like to continue to represent the special districts of Orange County on LAFCO as a voting member. I think, uh, I've shown the commitment, the knowledge and experience, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Fissler. Um, Jim Mosher?
(laughing).
There's too many Jims running around here.
Thank you, President Ferriman, members of the board. My name is Jim Mosher. The comment is actually about Agenda Item C1, but since it's the first one on the agenda, guess it's appropriate to comment on it now. Uh, Item C1 is the monthly solid waste diversion report that you receive, and as you know, I am not a ratepayer for the trash part of this district, so it may seem impertinent for me to comment on it, but you are a public agency. I'm a member of the public, and this is a study session. So, the point I would like to make is there's several things about this I hope will actually be studied at your next study session in July, where you have the full numbers for the fiscal year that is ending at the end of this month. Uh, some of the questions I would have is, number one, how the district is doing in terms of the per capita amount going to the landfill, which I believe is the new state standard. Um, as best I can tell from these reports, the amount going to the landfill has been staying essentially steady at 17,000 tons per year for the last many years before and after you had the organics program. I'm not sure what the per capita number is because I'm not sure how many people there are that are actually putting trash in the district cans, and I'm not sure if the district even knows, because I don't believe the Census Bureau probably provides that information, so I'm wondering how that's estimated. Number two, I'm wondering who these reports are prepared for or going to. If the reports are going to the cities of Costa Mesa and Newport Beach, I would think it would be, have to be segregated out. How much of this trash is coming from households in Costa Mesa? How much is coming from Newport Beach? I don't see that in the report. Uh, point number three regarding the, the new entry for the Orange Coast College Recycling Center. I noticed the numbers presented, the tonnages vary from month to month, so I believe that the recycling center really is counting how much they recycle each month, but I'm not sure how they're distinguishing whether those amounts are actually coming from residents who would otherwise be putting that recycled material in the district carts as opposed to other people who are not in the district coming to that. It's, as best of my knowledge, has not been clearly explained. And number four, and most troubling to me, is the numbers that are reported from CRNR. Those do not, the percent, the numbers, tonnages vary from month to month. The percentages do not. For instance, every month, it says that 1% of what goes in the carts is aluminum, but as I believe we know, if, if this month, everybody in the district filled their carts totally with aluminum, so that that was all that was being collected, the numbers would not change because the tonnages are being multiplied by some factors that were arbitrarily determined, or not entirely arbitrarily. Some, somebody characterized what the trash looks like, so I'm wondering how current those numbers are. When were they obtained? What areas of the city were they obtained from, and, and how are those numbers being computed at the moment? And then finally, since CNR apparently can't identify how much the recycled stuff coming out comes from this district, I wonder if anybody has ever audited them in terms of whether if you take all of those percentages that are given to the, to the customers that they have, and multiply those numbers by the tonnages delivered to their recycling center from those districts. If you multiply the tonnages times the percents that the districts are told that they are delivering, does that correlate with how much is actually coming out the far end of the CNR, RNR Recycling Center? I'm curious if any audit of that sort has ever been done. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, Scott a question?
Yeah.
Will we have the, the final year-end numbers? And Tom's shaking his head, yes, so we will have them in the July study session?
Yeah, we always do, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So, I need help with some of that in the bill.
I'll start first. Thank you.
President Ferriman, members of the board, I would like to take a stab at answering all of Mr. Mosher's questions. Um, first, we, the district uses a diversion report because the per capita formula is very complicated. The per capita formula is introduced and produced by CalRecycle. It takes into consideration, uh, population, number of people that work, and again, being a district that services two cities, and our district boundaries are a little, they're not exactly like the City of Costa Mesa and not like the City of Newport Beach. It's very difficult to calculate, use CalRecycle's, um, formula to calculate what our per capita disposal is. The reports I receive from CRNR are for the district's records. They, uh, total tonnage collected, total tonnage landfilled and recycled is reported to CalRecycle on an annual basis by calendar year. That is not done by the district. It is done by the cities. So, the city, uh, the district collects the data monthly, and then distributes it to both the City of Costa Mesa and the City of Newport Beach, respectively. CRNR does break down the tonnage collected. Um, the information on the diversion report, Mr. Mosher, is correct. It is the percentages. Our last waste characterization study was done in June 2018, so that is how current that data is. Um, that is what's shared with the cities, but that is also compared to what the annual, we know how much CRNR is collecting. We know how much is landfilled because when the trucks go to the landfill, they have to report which city they're coming from, so it's never, the hauler can never lie because this, uh, the county reports has a OC hauler.com website, so CalRecycle and the public can go and check how much trash is being landfilled by every city.
Can you address the OCC issue about?
Yes, the OCC, uh, my general manager, Scott, emailed CalRecycle to see if we could use OCC's recycling tonnage, and they said it was okay, so the district does use it. And when Mike Valli, the consultant from the City of Costa Mesa, produces his CalRecycle report annually, he does include the Cal, um, the OCC Recycling Center tonnage because it's within the boundaries of the city.
Jim, man.
So, even though they don't check where the recycling material is coming from, it falls within the City of Costa Mesa, so it's, points towards the recycling rate.
We get the credit because it's collected in Costa Mesa, correct?
Correct, because the OCC Center is also within our boundaries.
The city gets the credit, not us.
Correct.
Okay.
I believe that was most of the questions. Uh, for the waste characterization study, it is my understanding that CRNR picks routes, but I am sure Pars, our sustainability coordinator, can provide more information on that.
Thanks, Navila. Uh, I thought she did a great job addressing the questions. Uh, for the waste characterization, it's my understanding, they do it for a five-day period, and it's my understanding they do three routes in each day, and they're picking like a sample of, uh, I think it's 200 pounds from each, uh, load, and that's how he comes up with the numbers. Um, and then also for OCC, uh, that's right on. In Stanton, for example, we have our, basically our Materials Buyback Center at our corporate headquarters, and Stanton gets to claim that as well. So, it, it does help to have that.
Okay, so that, Jim, can I?
Go ahead.
So, so that, any city that has a recycling center, like, uh, down at Harbor, uh, I'm sorry, on Adams and Beach, in Huntington Beach, there's a guy that buy, does buyback. Does the City of Huntington Beach get the credit for all of that, then?
So, are you talking about a established brick-and-mortar place, or one of those where they have in the parking lot, kind of?
It's, it's in the parking lot. It's a, I mean, brick-and-mortar's a, a stretch. I mean, he's got a trailer, and he, you know, he buys cans and, and plastic bottles. Does he, does that owner of that business report to the, to CalRecycle through the City of Huntington Beach?
That's a great question. Um, I imagine if they're hauling the material back some place.
I only have great questions. You don't need to be.
(laughing).
Sorry, I had, I had to get you once today.
I imagine if they're hauling it back somewhere else, that number might be, you know, calculated in where that other location is. But if the city came in and claimed it, like, for example, in La Habra, there's a Costco. Costco has an incredible internal program with how they manage their waste that they create. Um, it's so good that they don't have to work with us for pretty much most of it. Um, the only thing they give to us is the end result that goes to the landfill, but everything else, they handle internally, and they gave us a report at the end of the calendar year, um, and they diverted more than, just that store specifically, diverted more than 1,100 tons. Um, and that was just from the waste side. Then they had like 16,000 tires that they had recycled, blah, blah, blah. So, in La Habra, we got the report. We can utilize that for our diversion.
That kind of goes back to what we were talking about, Art, when, and, and I know it's a, it's a controversial thing here in Costa Mesa, but when the, when the recycling, like the guy at Stater Brothers and the guy on 19th Street.
Right.
We would have been getting credit for all of that stuff.
Right.
And now those people are going somewhere else, if they're not going to Orange Coast College, I guess.
Exactly. But we, we, I was, been pushing this idea for many years.
That's why I brought it up.
And getting OCC onboard with our figures helps us to get to almost 62%.
I think it does.
But there's other recycling places in Costa Mesa that we should consider talking to and see how they do the reporting. There's a number of them. Plus, even if, if Home Depot does the same thing with their recycling, do you know if they, Home Depots do that also?
Uh, I'm not sure. There is a Home Depot in La Habra. Um, I haven't met with them specifically. In terms of Costa Mesa, um, they-
We have one at Costa Mesa.
Yeah, for sure. They definitely have, they definitely have an internal, I mean, it's a big corporation, so they have to, I imagine they're backing their cardboard and plastics and, and other things. Um, yeah, most corporations do have an internal program that are very large.
Who do they report to, do you know?
Uh, in terms of the diversion?
Yes.
So, like, in the case of Costco, we, we, uh, met with a person in La Habra, so we claimed their numbers. In other companies, like, for example, Smart and Final, they have an internal program. In La Habra, we're not claiming their diversion right now. We don't have a, and, and most companies do keep an internal data, but sometimes a store-level manager doesn't have access to that, or they don't even know for the matter. They just pack it up in a truck, send it back to their central warehouse, and it's handled.
You know, realistically, the, the biggest diversion, um, is commercial, especially here in Costa Mesa, I think. I mean, if, if we need to look at diversion rates and the kind of, what CalRecycle and the state wants, until we get the markets and the restaurants reporting organics diversion, I don't know if we'll ever hit our, our number. I mean, that, that's the biggest unknown out there, is what the markets and the, and the restaurants are throwing away. Am I wrong?
No, I will, uh-
Don't you dare tell me I'm wrong.
(laughing). Uh, I, I think there's still a potential to reach 75% from a residential perspective. I, I 100% agree with you. Commercial is a big, uh, component, and when you have the commercial in there, it helps. Like, in the case of Stanton, basically the same program for residents there as Costa Mesa, but then Stanton claims the, uh, commercial in theirs since it's all together.
Yeah.
And they also have that, you know, our recycling buyback center at corporate headquarters, so that gives them a big boost. Um, as a city whole, I think the number is like 68%.
Wow.
Which is, and that's the, uh, you know, that's the mass balance rate. Per capita probably is higher.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on Item One? Uh, we covered solid waste pretty well. Uh, Item Two is organics. We touched on that as well.
Yeah, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Mosher submitted comments on Item C2 as well, and so, Navila Guzman will be addressing those comments.
President Ferriman, members of the board, I had a chance to read Mr. Mosher's comments, and, uh, the organics tonnage report, or C2, is only for organic collected from the organic cart, not for organics collected in the mixed waste. That is why the 78.52 tons of recycled from the mixed waste cart, this mixed waste cart is not accounted for in that report, because it does not apply, it was not collected from the organics cart. And Mr. Mosher was correct. The number should have been 796.7 tons. It was my mistake. I did go back and change it, so next month's report will show that clarification with a note saying, "I changed the numbers because it should have been 796.7 tons recycled, not 836 collected."
Okay. Any questions? Just a quick question. Um, okay, so, we have a large item pickup for solid waste. Do someone has stuff they want to put out for a large item? Is there any way, or could we look at a large item program involving organics? And, and what, what I'm getting at, I'm sorry to interrupt, is, um, sometimes, and I'll use my own, I'll go through my yard and, especially in the spring, just go nuts cutting stuff down. Palm, palm tree, whatever. And, and they don't fit in the, they don't go in the organics cart, so I put them in the big cart. All right? And it pains me to do that because we're not going to get any organics credit for it. Is there a way to, go ahead?
Yes. So, if residents, we do get that question often. So, residents have two options if they have excess green waste. They can rent one of CRNR's three-yard bins. It's the smaller bins. They rent it out for a week. I believe it's $90 for the week. Unfortunately, we do not, the district does not get credit for that rent because that falls under the city's franchise. It's considered commercial, but we do tell residents they can place it in bags and use one of their large item pickups for the, so if they're, they're cutting down the tree, or they just have excess green waste, put it in different bags, and we can do a pickup for them. And I believe that does go to the AD facility.
That should go to the AD facility.
So, we do get the credit from it, for it in the-
Do we, do the residents need to pre-call you guys and let you know there's going to be extra organics out there, or just put them out there?
No, they have to call to schedule the large item pickup because it's a separate truck.
Okay. Thanks. Mike, any other comments? No. (laughing) I've done enough, Jimmy. Thanks. Okay, uh, organics, did we kind of cover that?
Yes, Mr. President.
Citizens Environmental Protection Academy, spring of 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gina Terriani will be giving his report.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, before you is an overview of the district's Spring 2019 Citizens Environmental Protection Academy, otherwise known as SEPA. And SEPA is a free educational outreach program that gives district residents the opportunity to learn about the district's key functions and programs. Um, also, they can tour our facilities and attend tours and presentations by our partner agencies. It does provide a behind-the-scenes look at our local recycling, water, and wastewater infrastructure, while allowing the public to engage with staff and with industry professionals. This was our third SEPA series, and it was held in April, between April 6th and April 25th. The program began with a workshop that included a family-friendly recycling presentation by Inside the Outdoors, a tour of the district's wastewater maintenance yard, and a visit to our 19th Street pump station, where the participants got a chance to learn about how wastewater pumps work, and also about our pump station art wrap program. The following weeks included tours of CRNR's Materials Recovery Facility and the anaerobic digestion facility, a tour of the Bowerman landfill in Irvine, and lastly, all of the participants were invited to receive certificates of completion at our April board meeting. And in terms of results, overall, we had a total of 42 participants that attended at least one of the events in the series, and our surveys indicated an average satisfaction rating of 8.88 on a scale of 1 to 10. And in the staff report, I've included some excerpts from the feedback that we received. Many of the surveys indicated appreciation for the district hosting the series, um, and they applauded the quality of the programming and the presentations. Unfortunately, CRNR did not allow our tour group to view the sorting conveyor when we visited the Materials Recovery Facility, so, um, some people did say that they were a little disappointed that they didn't get a chance to see the sorting in action, um, but overall, the response was positive. And one more thing, um, that I wanted to share that was notable is that the series came in under budget because we got such a great response from advertising in our quarterly newsletter, um, so we actually didn't have to do any additional paid advertising, so we saved some money there. Um, but that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good job. That's a great turnout, and I'd love to see that kind of participation.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, some, I've been approached that, um, somebody was interested in becoming a member.
Yes.
Now, the idea is, do you have to join at the beginning, or can you hop in anywhere in there?
Um, if we have space, so we take RSVPs for each of the events, um, and we also have a running list of people interested, so, once the schedule comes out, I send, um, all the information to everybody on our list and advertise, so they can sign up at that point.
Okay, so, in other words, that person could contact you?
Yes, yes.
Art? Yes, is, did the CRNR give you a reason why they couldn't look at the recovery at Stanton?
Um, I believe it was under repair that day when we had our tour.
Okay, that makes sense. Because I've been there, and I've seen it, you know, since they let the public look at it, but-
Yes. Yeah, usually we do. It was just that day it was, something was going on.
Okay, just curious.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it'd be kind of a cool thing if we could do this eventually, is, um, SEPA is adults, although we have some kids go on it. Somewhere in the long range in the future, could we, I mean, when I was in grammar school, field trips were the highlight of the year, right?
Yeah.
I, I mean, if we could get some kind of program where we could get kids involved in some kind of junior SEPA?
Yeah.
I, I don't know what kind of budget that would take, or, or what, but, I mean, especially with Davis Magn, Davis, I mean, those kids, they're indoctrinated with this stuff, and I bet there would be teachers throughout the district that might want to do something like this, so maybe for some future planning, we could-
We have been trying to incorporate more kid-friendly activities, so the Inside the Outdoors presentation is very much geared towards kids.
Yeah.
Um, so we're going to look into that for our next session to see if we can get more family-friendly, kid-friendly, things like that.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, well, it's-
Good job.
Once again, good job, and, uh, keep her up. Um, Item Four, General Manager declaring emergency work for two inverted siphons at, on Bristol Street.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be giving this report. So, as the subject line mentions, we have two inverted siphons on Bristol Street. Um, back in May, staff was cleaning the secondary siphon when the hose got stuck in, in the main line, and we could not get the hose out, so we had to cut the hose, 125 feet of the hose, as it remained inside the, um, the secondary, uh, pipeline. So, the plan was to remove that, that hose was to first, um, line the, the main siphon, main line, rehabilitate that main line, get that stabilized. Once that's stabilized, then we can go in and get the, the hose, the secondary line. Well, we hired National Plant Services to line, uh, the main line, uh, the, the primary line. Uh, while they were cleaning it, their hose got stuck in that, in that one, so now we have two hoses stuck. Um, and so, that's when I declared an emergency. Um, so, we had to, um, hire, um, several bypass pumps and had those installed in, on Bristol Street. You have pictures in your staff report what those look like, and had the elaboration of the pipeline. Um, so, um, the good news is that, uh, after several attempts, and I could have our district engineer elaborate more, we did get both, both hoses out. Um, it took some time, um, and we had to do a lot of evening work, so, um, and we're just several contractors, so this is going to be expensive. Just going to give you a heads-up, probably well over $200,000. two hundred thousand dollars, to get the hoses out and rehabilitate those siphons. So according to our code, operations code, once the general manager declares emergency work, the general manager has to bring that back to you for your information. Under the recommendation, it does says receive and file, but I was advised by district council that you do have to take action on this. You need to determine if there's a need to continue this as an emergency or not, so we do need some action. And again, I'll have district engineer elaborate more, and he can help you make a decision if we should continue this as an emergency or not, so I'll turn it over to Rob, and he can give you some more information on how we did with this, on removing those hoses, so...
Rob?
Yes, thank you. That was well reported, that's exactly the story, and it's like doing a CIP project, but under an emergency situation. So we have one more, two more nights of night work, because the upstream end is in the second traffic lane, and then they will finish that Thursday night, and everything will be back in service. And then, the next thing they're going to do is dig where the grass is over there, and fix the downstream end, and then it will be fully operational. So it was an unfortunate thing, and to prevent that in the future, we will use our camera while we're cleaning siphons, to make sure that we're getting everything out of there. I think there was an excessive amount of sand that the nozzle ran into and got buried, so we have taken steps to fix everything, and it's going along nicely. The city required night work, because we're in the second lane, but once we finish Thursday, or Wednesday night, then the rest of the work can be done during the day, because we only need to close one lane. So we have our very best contractor doing the work, and I talk to him every day, we strategize, so everything's under control, have not had an SSO, and we will not, but it's just, work is proceeding, and it's doing very well.
Art, the cost of two hundred thousand, does that include relining those systems, those two areas?
It includes a portion of relining. There was, the siphons are made of ductile iron pipe, and the inside coating, or lining, deteriorated, and there was a lot of corrosion. So we're going to line part of it now, just enough to get it back to operational, and then we're going to re-study additional improvements while we study all the other siphons, since this may be an indication of the condition of some of our other siphons. They're very hard to clean, because they're twenty feet deep at least, so we have to, we have a need to improve our cleaning, and we've got that figured out, too. So as far as that goes, once again, we will just line part of it now, and then come back later if the rest of it needs lining, but first we need to get it operational and end the emergency.
All right, Lynn.
Yes, I was just curious, according to our information we got, this will be on the board meeting, when we have the board meeting, as far as an update of what's going on with this, information-wise? So we'll have an idea to know what's going on, price-wise, and how far you've gotten?
Sure, we can, I think our intention was to bring this back, because we're going to need some appropriation of funds to complete this project, because obviously this wasn't budgeted, so I think that's when we said we would come back to the board for the appropriation of funds, and then we can give you an update on the status. It sounds like by, if we report back to you next week...
Okay.
Rob, do you think most of this will be done by then, by next week?
Will be pretty close.
So it's, for us to authorize it, the timing's okay?
Yeah, what we're thinking today is if you can, if you can take Ash into direct staff to continue performing emergency work on this project, and therefore, we don't have to get bids, we can continue doing the work we're doing.
And that approval needs to be by a four-fifths vote.
Since there's only four of you, so we need all four of you to vote on this, yeah.
I'm moving for approval.
So no pressure, everybody vote the right way.
I'm moving for approval. Before you do that, just, as I understand it, the siphon, the problem was the siphon moved in sandy soil, is that...
No, actually, there was, I think there was enough corrosion, so that some of the sand came from around the pipe into the pipe.
Okay.
So we're getting that sand out, that sand has taken a lot of cleaning time, so...
How many siphons do we have?
We have seven large ones like this, and then we have three or four small ones.
Okay, the larger ones, why aren't they in vaults?
I'm sorry?
Shouldn't they be in a vault?
What do you mean?
Well, in a...
Pump station?
Like a pump station vault, or...
A siphon is an industry-standard way of having gravity flow, go under a flood control channel or a stream, it just works on the difference in elevation between the two. So it's a lot less expensive, because to have a siphon than a pump station, because siphons still work by gravity, and they are not, they only need cleaning. A pump station takes...
Maintenance and everything.
Everything.
Well, with the siphon, though, they're buried.
Yes.
There's no need to put them in an enclosed...
That's correct.
An open vault.
Right, and they're, like, for instance, that Bristol one, there's a triple box culvert under the road.
Okay.
Triple concrete boxes, and our line goes under those, so that's why we had to have a siphon there. We have another one right around the corner, under the same flood control channel, and then we have another one in another part of town, under that same flood control channel. So what we are also doing is prioritizing an analysis of the siphons, so you will see that on the board meeting agenda as well.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion, I'll make that motion, that we continue with the emergency operation until we finalize it at the board meeting.
That's all, sir.
Been any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. President and board members.
Okay, let's move along to financial review of CRNR oral report. Mark?
Mark Davis will be giving his report, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members. As you are aware, CRNR had approached the district with a request for a CPI adjustment beginning July 1, 2019, and adjustment is five point eight percent that they had requested. One of the components, and before you can act on that adjustment, is to have their profit margin taken a look at, to make sure that it supports what they're asking for. In an effort to accomplish that, CRNR did provide a profit and loss statement to us for review, however, that profit and loss statement that was provided was only for one of the components of the services that they provide, it was just the hauler component, and there was no information that was provided related to the recycling component or the organics component. So we needed to bridge the gap between what they had provided and what we needed to be able to see, so that you could make an informed decision. To do that, I did meet with the VP of Finance at CRNR to go through what was provided and what was missing, and requested some additional information. When I met with VP of Finance, they were very open, they were very, showed all the support that was at least in the information that they did provide, so that we could get some comfort level as to what was provided. CRNR is working on the open items for us to be able to conclude as to whether or not the profit margin supports the rate increase. They do know that the board meeting, when you're planning to take action on this, is next Thursday, and so they're diligently working to be able to meet that deadline. So as of right now, we are unable to conclude, or unable to provide you with a recommendation that that increase is supported. We'll have to wait until we get to the board meeting to be able to provide you some better information at that time. Available for any questions you may have?
Will you have that information by then, by the board meeting?
It's entirely in CRNR's case. If I don't, if we don't get the information, then at the board meeting, I'll recommend that they can't support the increase.
Well, certainly, if they want the CPI on July 1st, and we don't have it at our last board meeting in June, they're not getting the CPI increase July 1, and whether it goes retroactive or not, I'd have some, I'd want to have some discussion on that, too.
Well, I'm sure they understand the gravity of it, and the timing, and...
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not going to drag their feet on this, I don't think, personally. Will they meet with you again, Mark, before the board meeting, for you to look at it?
Our, we met yesterday, due to availability of the staff, and they are going to provide me information electronically, so I don't know that we will meet in person, it'll probably be via email and phone calls to resolve this issue before the board meeting.
Okay, well, you'll keep us informed, and we'll find out next week, I guess. Any other questions? Let's move along to item six, multifamily solid waste collection oral report.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, members of the board, per direction from the Board of Directors, district staff has prepared a proposal to provide solid waste collection services to all multifamily homes in the city of Costa Mesa. The proposal briefly details the current problems with split residential service, such as a number of trucks operating under the open market system and the effect it has on city streets. Currently, the city of Costa Mesa has nine authorized haulers to collect trash in multifamily homes and in commercial areas. Reports done by various agencies and solid waste organizations have proven that trash trucks stress the pavement more than nine thousand three hundred times as much as an SUV, including a fully loaded transit bus, a semi-truck hauling a single trailer, or a UPS delivery truck. So the city of Costa Mesa is spending a lot of money paving their streets when all these trash trucks are just constantly putting stress on them. Additionally, haulers participating in the open market system do not have programs in place to dispose of abandoned items. If you walk, if you drive through any parts of the city that have large multifamily homes, they always see abandoned items in their alleys and their street weights, because haulers don't have a program in place. This is costing the city over a hundred thousand dollars a year, plus staff time to pick up the abandoned items and then dispose of them, so that is somewhere where the district can definitely help. The staff report, the proposal explains how CMSD would resolve these problems, and what the district thinks the best approach plan is. Staff has also identified possible challenges associated with the proposed residential merge, such as hiring additional staff to assist in the management of the solid waste contract. Staff is proposing hiring a management assistant and a part-time code enforcement officer. The city of Costa Mesa currently has an ordinance where dumpsters must be enclosed, so we would need a second part-time code enforcement officer to assist in making sure that the dumpsters are in compliance with city ordinance. The district's educational and outreach budget would need to be doubled to account for all the new solid waste customers. This is an estimated increase in education and outreach budget of sixty thousand dollars annually. Costs associated with the possible merge of the multifamily residential customers will be fully absorbed by the district at no cost to the city of Costa Mesa. If the city of Costa Mesa accepts the proposal, CMSD would need to go out to bid to provide dumpster service for multifamily. Currently, our contract with CRNR does not mention dumpsters, it's only for cart service and specifically mentions single-family homes, so we would need to go out to bid. Staff does not know what the rates for dumpsters would be until a winning bid is chosen. Costs for the bid process, prop 210 notices, and outreach costs associated with the merge would also be fully observed by the CMSD at no cost to the city. But those are a one-time cost. The only one that would need an annual increase would be our outreach educational budget. Like our quarterly newsletter, we would need to double. Currently, it's going to a certain set of residence, multifamily, according to CMSD records, it's another about twenty-two thousand units, so we would need to double our newsletter budget. Plus our social media, our giveaways, our advertisement, we would need more to reach the larger customer base. I am available for any questions?
Any questions? Art? In this discussion with us today, have you met with the city prior to this meeting? So it's just the things that we've developed?
Correct. I have done my research, checked their website, met with staff and their consultant, Mike Vallier, just to see how, what programs they have in place with rules and regulations on their different contracts or different haulers, but staff has not yet met with the city with this proposal.
So you don't know if they have a contract with the nine different haulers?
They don't have contracts, what they require the haulers to do is pay a permit fee, plus their franchise fee upfront every year.
Is that permit fee for one year?
Correct.
So it could be stopped if we went out to bid?
Correct.
Getting one vendor?
Correct, so if the city agrees with this merge, we would need to get their permit expiration dates and work with each hauler to phase out their clients, to, and work with the winning bid to deliver dumpsters.
How long do you think that would take to phase out a hauler?
Depends, depends if their expiration dates are all around the same time, if it's a calendar year, annual year, depends how many customers each hauler has. Waste management might have more customers in Costa Mesa than maybe where, or CRNR, so it just depends.
But is that based on their permit application for one year?
Correct.
Okay. Mike?
Okay, so, each property owner contracts with the hauler?
Yes.
And when the property owner contracts with the hauler, they have to make sure it's a city-approved vendor, right? Okay, so if we, if we move to this, we would then be working with the property owners and the hauler, or hauler, whatever system we come up with, right?
Correct, we would be working with the winning bid to, and holding town hall meetings, doing social media campaign about the merge and their new service, and who their new hauler is, when they would get a new dumpster, but then it would be, we would mediate that.
Yeah, would we, the information gathering is going to be, well, I don't know, it could be mixed, I mean, we would go to the city and get a list of the property owners, or to, right, or is that an independent thing?
My research showed that the city of Costa Mesa does not have a list, or does not have a good list of how many units they are servicing. In our annual car recycle call, they stated a number way less than what the district has, because these residents are sewer customers. They might not be our solid waste, so we have a detailed list of all the addresses, APN numbers, unit numbers, and the number that the city stated in that annual call was nowhere near what the CMSD has.
In essence, we would have to go to the nine haulers that have permits, and say, "Okay, who are your customers?", and if that's proprietary, they may not, they may not want to give that information up. I mean, so that's going to be a challenge right there. The other question I had is, you talked about the expense to the district would be the outreach, obviously, and the one and a half employees. What kind of income do we expect to get by taking this?
That is unknown at this time, because the rates would be set by the winning bid.
Oh, good point, yeah, good point.
So we would not know...
Do we know by chance with the city, or do we know what the haulers are charging those people right now on average?
I did a quick survey, and I found out what the nine haulers charge annual, monthly, depending, for the city of Costa Mesa, it's, so, I did a survey for one pickup for a mixed waste dumpster, so I have an idea, but again, until we go to a winning...
So you're on that track to, I mean, I'm not looking for exactly, but like an average of what they spend, how it compares to the residential, to what we charge?
It is also, it wouldn't be a fair comparison, because our winning bid would also need to provide free large item pickups, household hazardous waste, we would want the same services that our residents have now...
Absolutely.
...to have, so we don't know if my survey is actual real data, or if those numbers would be completely different once all those services are added.
I mean, whether they're made up or real or not. The other thing is, would... The other thing is, would we offer these multifamily organics recycling as well?
Yes, we would offer organics in the form of carts, or dumpsters, depending the location, if they have the size. The city also has the dumpster ordinance, it has to be enclosed.
Yeah.
So, if there's space, if there's space, a lot of these homes have very narrow driveways, and the dumpster is at the end, so it might not fit in organics.
We're looking at alleyways, we're looking at long driveway, we're, there's a lot of factors in there that, that have to be addressed. So, you're telling me CNR has a, a bigger dumpster for organics?
I spoke with the route manager, he said that currently, they don't have the dumpsters available for organics.
Sure, they could replace the lids very easily, in what they have, right? Any hauler.
Yes.
So, like, when I trim my palm trees, I could ask for one of those. Pars, don't take that, I'm just kidding about that part. But, I just wanna make sure that we keep talking about organics. I know how sensitive Director Perry is about, and I agree. We, I wanna make sure that the organics is part of this program, if we go-
Yes, if the proposal is accepted by the city, and we go out to bid, we would request that the bids offer the same services that we currently offer our residents, and the organics program.
Right, thank you, Nabil. Arlene?
I, you know, listening to this, I'm just wondering, this is staff to staff? In other words, city to staff, to our staff? Would, does city council know anything that's going on on this? Because I just wonder if it wouldn't help if a letter was written from us, and it detailed that they're actually losing $100,000 a year off of the way it's being handled.
I just finished the proposal, staff has not, staff has not reached out to the city of Costa Mesa. We were looking for direction.
Just want comments from the board, to see, to see if you believe we're going in the right direction, before we, before we present it to, to their staff. So, it's just really trying to keep you in the loop of what we're doing. And, and if there's something we're not doing, and you want us to do something differently, we can revise proposal, and then, take it to their staff. We wanna, we wanna state it on a staff level first, and then, get the elected officials more involved, but right now, we won't.
But, there are members of the council that know that we're-
They know.
That, that we're working on some of this stuff. I mean, we, a lot of us have had conversations with them, even at our quarterly meeting, we've, we've talked about it, so. There, I don't even think council's partially-
I'm expecting some kind of report, you know, from the staff, demonstrating the, the ability to make, at least break even on this thing. And, to take in as many items for consideration as, as we can, before we go jumping off the pier.
Yeah, definitely, we don't wanna implement a program and, and go broke, absolutely. It's gotta, it's gotta be self-sufficient. But, but like Nabil, like Nabil says, you know, even though she, even though she's got a survey of what they're charging now, it's, we don't believe it's very accurate, especially if we're gonna be adding additional services. 'Cause right now, they're getting very minimal service. They're not getting the type of service that our single-family homes get. And so, if we wanna make that even par, that's gonna, that's gonna adjust their rates.
I agree with Jim about jumping off the pier. And, I certainly don't want nine haulers sitting in here telling us that we're going down the wrong track, till we have our ducks in our own.
Art? Question from Nabil, do we know what the permit fee is for the city for the nine haulers? Is it all the same for all of them, or not?
Yes, I do not remember the number, but it's in the, I believe it's $1,000 for the annual permit, plus they have to pay their franchise fee upfront, or 30 percent of their franchise fee upfront. And then, the rest of the fee is collected at the end of the year.
Can you kind of figure that out, next time we talk about it? What, what the city's taking in?
Yes.
Is it like 2 million, or 3 million dollars? 5 million?
Like 1.5.
Oh, 1, that's all?
Yeah, 1.5 million.
That's surprising.
Ours is jumping, chomping at the bit.
For the permit fee, it's, it's 25,000 quarter, or 10,000, if you get it at the beginning of the year. So, if they do prorate it, so if you want like a, if you have a permit related to your, you can get it.
And it's the same fee for all?
Yeah, same.
And we still don't know what the 20, the 30 percent is that they divert, or take? We don't know what they've, they've paid the city that 30 percent?
The franchise.
For the franchise fee?
That I'm not sure about, but the permit fee is standard 10,000.
Okay.
Okay, so, so you, you just told me that roughly 90, the city makes roughly $90,000 a year off nine, if my, if my Estancia High School math is right. They make about $90,000 a year in permit fees, right? And it's costing them $100,000 to pick up free couches and stuff? It's a wash.
Well, yeah, but they get the, the 30 percent of their total volume.
That's where, that's where the, that's where the income, right?
Still not enough.
The 30 percent, the franchise part.
So, yeah, I'm not too knowledgeable in the franchise fee portion. Like, for our business in Costa Mesa, I don't have a franchise fee portion either. So, I'm not, not the best person on revenue to get from there. But, I know about the permanent standard fee.
We would have to find out their income from all of the haulers for a year, period, to find out, you know, what they take in. Because I think that's a low amount.
If we can get it, I think it's low, too.
It's a way low, way low amount. 'Cause I figure, the city could be getting 3 to 4 million dollars a year, not the franchise fees, if you went to one hauler, possibly.
Used to be 14 haulers.
I know.
Used to be, used to be seven, at one point, there were 17.
Okay, any other questions or comments? When are we gonna be talking about this again? You have ideas, Scott?
I don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have the time. In a few months, we, next step is to go approach the city.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Item seven, consider revising CMSD's Operations Code Section 301060, time of regular meetings.
Mr. President, maybe a suggestion, since Vice President Uton's not here, we can always delay this, bring it back next week for your consideration.
I think that'd be wise, 'cause Bob has it.
Can we just, I mean, just briefly, since I'm the one that brought this up originally, does that Fourth Tuesday, I think you had some issues with the Fourth Tuesday before, Jim, or does that? I just, this Thursday thing where we are all at different meetings all day long, you know, I have locog the same day, ISDOC has the quarterly, you guys have to bail out a SARFA, and don't you do your border thing on Thursdays, too?
Fridays on the end of the month.
Is Tuesday a good day of the week? Overall, I know you have some conflicts.
I mean, I could always adjust my conflicts. I think Tuesday might be better for me. To make, just, just for me.
Well, it doesn't sound like, it sounds like we need to have a screw-up discussion. So, Scott, maybe we can cable it.
We'll put it on for next week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, is that okay with you?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Closing items, oral communications and director comments. Does anybody have anything for the good?
I, I would like to hear from our esteemed general manager about his jaunt across the world. Can you give us a five-minute recap?
Yeah, I don't wanna take, it's not, I don't wanna talk too much about it. In fact, I was gonna brief the board and the public next week. So, I'll have a full report on my trip to China, and discussing waste management with Chinese officials. I'll have pictures for you and all that stuff, so I was planning to do that next week.
Oh, okay.
Thanks for the gift. Is there some significance to chopsticks as a gift?
It's just easy, easy, easy.
You could fit it in your carry-on?
It's easy to carry.
I have a comment. Are the employee information sheet, is that for us to fill out?
Yes.
And give back to you? Just to give back to you?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments, directors?
Good meeting.
Oh, I've, I've got one thing. The 26th, and I guess that they are gonna bring it to everyone's attention that I've been on the board for 30 years, at the Orange County Sand District. But, I, I'd like to have, you know, a few people show up, you know. It's at 6 o'clock on the 26th.
It's on Wednesday.
Oh, CSD? Oh, CSD, okay.
Yeah.
30 years, I don't, I don't even know if my kids are that old.
You know, don't start with me. I'm very well-preserved, aren't I?
Pickled.
Oh, God, I guess.
What's, okay, the 26th. Actually, what's happening is CSDA is coming down to this area, and we're having our strategic planning meeting. And it's gonna be from like the 25th, 26th, 27th. Actually, 24 starts it. And, the 27th, I just wanted to let you know that, you know, we all should be going to the ISDOC luncheon. Because the 27th is when all the candidates speak also, you know.
I'll be, I have an SDR, I'm a board meeting that, I'll be in Sacramento that, that day, so I'm gonna miss the lunch.
See, so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna hop out, I'll do the strategic planning up until the 26th, then, then the 27th, I'll go to that lunch, and then, we have our public hearing that night.
Yeah.
Will you be here for that?
Yeah, my flight comes in, I like it.
Okay, yeah, so.
I think the lunch is like at 6 o'clock, I'm not sure.
Oh.
On the Wednesday, okay.
On the Wednesday, for, for, you know, my 30 years.
Kate, can I speak?
6, what time did you say?
6.
O'clock, on the 26th.
I think, I'm not sure, maybe, maybe some, one of our esteemed assistants could help.
Will we receive something? Okay, okay, yeah.
Okay, well, nothing else, this meeting's adjourned.
Thanks, Scott.